And then you would want to do the roll call? Baker?
Here.
Coon?
Here.
Dryden?
Here.
Hedrick?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Sassy?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Fire?
Police?
Here.
Public Works? Ambulance? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2025 regular council meeting? Okay, Kevin, in second, Jason? All in favor of approving the minutes of the January 7th, 2025 regular council meeting, say aye. All right, that's.
All same.
Okay, that's right, you worked here. Okay, in old business, we have the street committee report, Jordan?
We have Walker, Vino, David, Taffey, myself, Mike, Dryden, Brett, Coon, Amanda, Diane, and Jessica. Uh, we have a meeting for talk, uh, we have one thing on our agenda, and that was that Mayor Diane received several multiple calls regarding cities through sanding intersections in streets. These were all positive calls. Mayor Diane also read a comment from Mary Jo, commenting on how well the streets around the hospital have been maintained and cemented as well. This has made their job much easier, and so good job, Public Works, and there was no public comment. We adjourned our meeting at four oh two P M.
All right, thank you. And now the super committee minutes, Mr. Dryden?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We met immediately following the street committee. Same people were present. Uh, the first item was the study commission budget. Mayor Dion presented the city study commission budget, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. The chair of this, uh, study commission, Mr. Walker, she provided the rationale behind the budget proposal. There's a copy of that in your packet, the study commission budget here, so you can see that. And the committee recommend the council approval of the two-year budget for the city study commission. On budget and overtime, item number two, Mayor Don presented the city budget in relationship to the year-to-date expenditures at midpoint in fiscal year twenty five. On expenditures for overtime pay, the city has spent almost ninety thousand this fiscal year. This amount is less than the amount spent for overtime when compared with mid-year fiscal year twenty four. F Y I. The next item was on, um, budgeted funds for the pool and for a pool manager. Mayor Dion indicated the city budget could sustain hiring a pool manager at about twenty-five dollars per hour and limited to forty hours per week for the summer pool season. She will work with the personnel committee to create a job description for the pool manager position and move on from there. So again, F Y I. Next item was on the Glendive Police Department intern chief pay and benefits. Mayor Dion recommended that the council approve moving acting chief Mills to interim chief and provide the appropriate increase in pay and benefits as if she were the, uh, police chief. And so the committee recommends the council approval of proposal to increase the pay and benefits for interim chief Mills. The next item was on the reserve police officer and the fire cadet, uh, position and cost. Those are, of course, two separate entities there. The Glendive Police Department presented a proposal to establish a reserve police officer positions. Intern Chief Mills said there would be no cost to the city. Um, no such proposal came from the, uh, fire department for the fire cadet positions. So the committee recommended the council approval of the reserve police officers, uh, positions. Uh, the next item was about the damaged door at the Glendive Police Department where the public, um, enters. And Mayor Dion informed the committee of the damaged door at Glendive Police Department entrance. The replacement cost is nine thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. The committee requested that if the mayor could find money to pay for a third of the replacement cost, the city would then make a one-time donation. One-time donation. The committee recommends a donation for replacement door at Glendive Police Department entrance at an amount not to exceed three thirty-three hundred twenty-seven dollars. A rounded up. Camera notifications. Mayor Dion informed the committee and the public that the city's security cameras are up and operating twenty-four hours, seven days. And that's an F Y I. There was no public comment. We adjourned at five oh six. Uh, that completes my report, uh, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have public comment. I have Jake Paul signed up for public comment. If you could come forward. He's still there? Yep, there he is.
For three. My name is Jake Foltz. I have a statement. I have had an issue with a fence that's on my property that obstructs my free vision down the street. After taking said issue to the city, an order was written to give the okay for construction. I appealed said order, and it then went to the board of adjustments. Was scheduled and and through that hearing again, it was okay to build. Again, uh, I appealed that order. It went to district court. The judge set an order that the city made a bad decision and remanded it back to the city on February twentieth, twenty twenty four. This council rewrote the codes on the same day, February twentieth, twenty four, possibly to protect their previous decision. Question. How can a city government change a code to that to benefit one citizen when it penalizes another? Excuse me, one more time. Thank you.
Thank you. On to new business. We're going to, um, need a motion to approve the second reading of nuisance ordinance dash zero one dash two zero two five. Did I get a motion? Okay, Betsy, in a second. Okay, Kevin? All right, is there before, is there any discussion before I read it for the second time? Does anyone have any concerns about it? All right, so I'll read it for the second time. This is an ordinance amending Title Four, Section four one one of the nuisance ordinance of the city codes of the city of Glendive. Nuisance defined four dash one dash one. Nuisance defined, anything which is injurious to health or is a life safety issue or hazard, or is an obstruction to the free use of another's property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property of another, or including but not limited to placement and or maintenance of any motor vehicle, motorcycle, trailer, camp trailer, or mobile home on any property in the city in violation of any zoning regulation or any other city ordinance, or any residential structure, including all structures to remain vacant for more than one year or its condition constitutes a hazard or where the property is maintained so as to obstruct free passage or use in the customary manner of any navigable lake or river, bay, stream, canal, or basin, or any public park, square, street, or highway is defined to be a nuisance. So we'll do a roll call vote on the second reading of the nuisance ordinance. Baker?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Hedrick?
Aye.
Heinz? Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to approve the study commission budget. So could I get a motion for that? All right, Mike, in a second. Okay, Rhett, all in favor? Oh, wait, do we want to discuss it at all before we vote? Any questions or concerns?
I just had a question.
Okay.
The community engagement, a thousand dollars, I was wondering what that is for?
Well, uh, my understanding from when I was at the meeting when they set the budget was that this would be for, uh, purchasing food for the public hearing. They have to have two public hearings. And, um, this was how it was explained that they thought it would get more people out if we offered food. I've never been to a public hearing with any food, but, um, I know that, I think there were some questions at the last, at the super meeting. And they said they were going to try to be as economical as they could, so, um, that's what, that's my understanding. You know, this is taxpayer money. This is money from the city budget, which is paid for by the taxpayers. So I guess my only um, concern was, of course, to be as economical as possible because at the end of the study, if there's any money left, it will come back to our budget. So.
Want to go back into the study?
Well, we'll go back into the, if the, now, I'm not sure about the study committee, if they're going to take the whole two years because um, my understanding was they were going to try to expedite it a little bit, but so any money left over from this year will go into their budget for next year if they're still active. Otherwise, it will go back to the general fund. Yes.
You know, I don't see, uh, if the study commission was to hold a meeting outside the city council chambers here. Let's say Epic, for example, I would think they would have to pay rent and such, and if there were two public hearings uh, as called for by the statutes, and that may also come out of community engagement, which I have no problem with that, I'm just saying. And if that's the case, then they might want to, even if this is approved, think about how much that's going to cost versus money for other things there. Um, and of course, the advertising and stuff that would go with that, they have a separate line item for that, so. Anyway, thank you.
Yes.
I guess when I look at community engagement, um, it leads me to believe that possibly some of this money could be spent on um, putting these meetings up for the public to view. And for transparency reasons and whatnot. And I guess what I'd like to say about that is we already have the equipment that the taxpayers have bought. And I would just like to encourage the study commission as elected officials to be as transparent as possible and um, let the community engage with the process and the discussions that you're having by recording, live streaming. Somehow put it out to the public so they know.
Okay. I think that's a, that's a good point, uh, because we do already have it here that, um, a lot of people would rather, you know, watch the meetings from home, but so that's something we can.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion, though.
Mayor, just a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so with the budget as it's presented here, and then it, let's say it's adopted. And if, uh, a line item was exceeded, then that would have come back to the council for their approval. Or if, I mean, if there was request to change money from one item to another, would that then fall onto the council to approve that or not? I mean, the, if we approve the budget, this is what we are approving, these line items to have some sort of function, otherwise what's the point of it, right? So.
Right. Um, I'm not sure, Mike. My thought is that we are really generally just approving the, you know, what we already set aside for their budget. Um, they are the ones who are determining how it gets broken down. Uh, there, there is more information in the codes about, about the, um, study committee and what they're allowed to do, so they they can, they can hire different people, like an expert, or they could set up another committee under their committee. So there's, um, because a lot of this is done in very big cities. I mean, we're just a small city, but I could see how in a bigger city you would need to be more, um, intense with the budget, I guess, so. My understanding, though, is every time you change something, it has to come to the council.
Okay.
So.
But, uh, just one other comment on this, uh, um, maybe in, um, uh, complement to their, um, process and budgeting here, they have a third of it in miscellaneous, so that can cover a lot of things that they need to. And I, I think that's a good idea, because this only happens every ten years and it's not clear, and each one is different, and each one has, uh, different momentum and such, so, um, um, our job here is to give them the wherewithal to go do their job, and that's what we're doing, so.
And direction, because it is, we are the stewards of the taxpayer money, so, you know, we are required, I think, to be cognizant of how it's being spent. So. Any other concerns? So I got a motion. I think I got a first and second. I lose track. So next, all right. So all in favor of approving the study commission budget, say aye. Anyone abstaining? All right, the next item is to approve the pay increase and benefits for the interim police chief Mills. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Doug, in a second, Betsy? All right, is there any discussion about this?
Question. Okay. Um, Andrew, I understand the pay increase, but what is the benefits?
Well, actually, from what I can gather is she loses a little bit of benefit because as the assistant chief, when she gets on time, she gets it at one and a half, and as the chief, she'll just get it at one for one. I don't really see any benefit. Um, as far as what I would consider a benefit, because like I said, that's um, the bene, the, um, pay increase would, would be the benefit, and that's just over three hundred dollars a month, so. Um.
Do we need that in the motion? Because it's a little it's not applicable.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, so. The are we going to redo the motion? You think?
I think we need to.
Okay, so the motion will be to approve the pay increase for interim police chief Mills. So could I get a motion for that amended? Okay, Doug, in a second. Okay, Mike? All right, is there any more discussion about it now that it's amended?
Well, Mayor, I don't want to be too technical, but the, uh, uh, because we appreciate what Chief Mills is doing, and, um, you know, she's been doing a outstanding job, um, and this is the first for a number of months, and now we're trying to say you should be getting more. Uh, it probably does benefit slightly, since it's a slight amount of money, the retirement, I would think.
Right.
In the long run, but we know she's not thinking about retirement, and she was going to be a good employee for the city, but if she is thinking about retirement, she's still a good employee. Don't, don't take my word that wrong way there. But, uh, so I don't know if that affects the motion, but anyway, there are other things I okay.
Other things that you would consider benefit. Okay, all in favor of approving the pay increase for interim police chief Mills, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carries. All right, the next item is approve establishing a reserve police officer position. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Jason, in a second, I will say, is Kevin? All right. Any questions about this or any discussion about the reserve officer position?
Uh, just a question, Mayor, so, uh, the way we're looking at this, this will be going into effect as soon as I mean, not necessarily tomorrow, but basically as soon as tomorrow, and correct. I mean, I mean, there's no, there's nothing to hold us back from moving ahead and having people apply to do this and both and that, so, okay. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of approving establishing a reserve police officer position, say aye? Anyone abstaining? Okay, the next item is to approve the donation to replace the Glendive Police Department entrance in the amount of three thousand dollars. So could I get a motion for that? Rhett, in a second? Okay, Jordan. Now, before we get too far, um, I found the nineteen ninety-six Law Enforcement Center agreement. Nicely typed on a real typewriter. Okay, it says on page two, number nine, "The city shall be responsible for the janitorial work on the city use spaces as well as the personal restrooms, as well as the maintenance of all areas reserved for the exclusive use by the city. The county shall be responsible for the maintenance of the commonly shared areas." So I just want to make it clear that the contract states "The county shall be responsible for the maintenance of the commonly shared areas." The reason we, at least what I understood, the reason that we felt compelled that we could try to find some money to contribute to this is because it's used by the police, the sheriff, and the jail, and the public. So at the time that we approved this, I had not yet found, I had not yet dug out this contract, so I'm not going to try to influence you one way or the other. I found the money in the police budget. It is in their money for training and travel. We, we said there will be no travel or training unless it's required for your job, so they had eight thousand dollars in their budget for travel and training. If we take three thousand to replace this door, that leaves them with five thousand. Now, we're not required to, but I'm just saying that's that's where we, we're at right now. So is there any other discussion about the door? I know several people have said they're afraid we're starting a precedent here, although we've certainly stated it's for the door only and the one-time thing. So before we call for the vote, any discussion about the door?
That information is about the whole, the whole bill?
Uh, no, it was just that Katie was approached by Tom Green, and then she sent it on to me, and of course, I didn't immediately think to, you know, dig through thirty years' worth of papers, but I did, and then found the agreement. And so then I discovered that, oh, it's actually is their responsibility, so I thought I should bring that forward because that's the fact of the matter. However, like I said, we use the door, the public uses the door, and it is not, it's in your packet, and it's nine thousand nine hundred eighty dollars for that door. So anyway, that's all I know about it. All right, so, yes, Mike?
Oh, I don't have anything to say, Doug. And you don't have to say a word. You can just make a total pass on this, but you've worked out that building for a long time. I know you're in the midst of a lot of those various agencies, so if you have a feeling one way or the other, you can say that, and if not, you can say, well, why don't you guys decide? Kick it back, so.
We have to look at those contracts. Last year, Sheriff Kane and Kane wanted to renegotiate some of these contracts. No one's had time to do that. Personally, I just felt, right, because we use that door often in charge of the sheriff's office. I just feel like it's a good bait option to help out, to do not favor it there, and I do know it's the responsibility of the, last time, the sheriff's office to pay for that door. But personally, I feel it would be nice if we could help them out because they're in the same financial body.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, well, then perhaps this vote should be a roll call then, so that, um, everyone can give their opinion? Is it controversial, do you feel? Not really. Okay, let's just say all in favor of approving the donation of three thousand dollars for the Glendive Police Door entrance? Say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, good. All right, now the next item is to approve hiring a director of operations to start on February third, twenty twenty five. All right, Kevin's making a motion. How about a second? Betsy? All right, any discussion or questions? Yes, Mike?
Uh, Mayor, you know, um, I may have missed all this because I should be more studious, unlike you, Mayor, but, uh, I didn't see why the personnel committee, did they do this back, uh, before their meeting on December twenty-third?
We ca, I called the personnel committee to have the interview. And so I guess we probably should have had a report from it, but, um, we had the interview, uh, last week. We had a very qualified applicant who's willing to accept a training assignment as we phase out I Bailey um, with a lot of experience, and, uh, I don't know if anybody who was at the interview wants to, um, enlighten Mr. Dryden, but, uh, I was very impressed. I thought, uh, this is the most qualified candidate that I've seen since I've been mayor, and we've had a few candidates. And his experience is vast, so I feel that he'll be a good fit, and I was very impressed that he understood the budgeting process and that he realized, um, what state our budget is in right now and was willing to accept a lower wage to start out. So, um,
Ask it. Uh, there is third research facility, the hard domain area.
Oh, yeah.
He was pretty up on it. He liked him.
Yeah, that counts Jessica and Darcy like them.
One of the problems. He knows what he's doing. Our job. So.
Yeah.
I'm training.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the, the hiring. I just, and in the minutes, I sense you guys have comments now. I think I didn't know that. I just didn't see that the, he'd been interviewed, that's what I, but number two then, uh, and this is somewhat aside of the vote, but it's part of this whole thing. So we vote to, to make an offer to hire beginning February third, um. When will our plan fall into place, and this will affect him, of course? How long he's training, how long he's part-time? In terms of costs or whatever.
Right.
Not, not getting paid what he really is, uh, we should be paying him in terms of his experience and stuff. And, and then all that affects, uh, I'm not saying I want an answer right now. I'm just saying this is something we what happens with I Bailey and how we work all this out. So there's a lot of moving parts here. We don't need to actually deal with any of them. I just wanted to bring that to the attention that.
Oh, yeah.
This doesn't mean I Bailey's out the door tomorrow or anything, doesn't mean, um, but it may beg the question if we have an idea of how long this, uh, his. training process will be or if that's going to be um, uh, what's the word there, to kind of figure it out as you go along. So we can say that's my life, but anyway.
I guess, uh, like what I can tell you is what I know.
Okay.
Okay, so um, I don't think, at least my experience from being the mayor, when we do interview somebody, then you know, I just bring it forward to like hire the, you know, the patrol officer or whatever, so.
Okay.
It wasn't an actual personnel meeting, so to speak, it was an interview.
Okay.
So, um, after the interview, we talked about how this could possibly work. And then I called him to see if he would consider a training assignment. So what we're looking at is a three-month assignment. Um, and then see how he's doing and then if everything's going well, then we would bump him up a couple dollars for another three months so that he would have a six-month training assignment. Where he would work with I Bailey, he would have time to work with Darcy, maybe some time with Jess and that I would have time to work with him and of course Frank. So at the end of six months, he said he felt that he would be able to know if he could just take this over or if he would, we would need to continue with I Bailey. Because I'm not an accounting person, I'm very nervous about the federal audit. I'm nervous about uh doing the budget again because this budget was such a struggle. And then, of course, we've also got, you know, our um AFR too. So maybe we would want to keep I Bailey through those things because they've done it and they know how everything goes and um, if he feels like he's not comfortable with that, then we would just keep him in the training assignment for up to one year. Um, and that will save us a lot of money because once he's comfortable and we feel like he can move forward, then we would phase out I Bailey and then he would just take on the full uh duties of the director of operations. So, you know, when you look at the duties of the director of operations, it's five pages long and it's uh pretty intense. So I don't expect that even someone who's, you know, audited federal banks for years and has all this experience in government is necessarily going to know how everything works in Glendale, America, so. He's willing to um accept a training assignment and we felt that between him and how I Bailey could be able to make a decision of when he could move into that um permanently. But so for six months, definitely training assignment. After that, um, maybe not, but up to a year. And he's willing to agree to all that.
This will be quick, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, thank you, that was very well done, thank you, appreciate all that. Um, and I don't know how much this is a specific question, if I should get into the weeds on this, but let's just be blunt about, okay, uh, this position here, will it still include um HR responsibilities? So he, he knows that and that would be part of his responsibility, okay, cool, thank you.
And union negotiations?
Yes.
Yeah, because all, all three union contracts are up?
Okay.
So, yes.
Well, if he's, if he says yes, then let's welcome him aboard.
Yeah.
If we, anybody else agrees, I guess.
Yeah. All right, so any other questions or discussion?
Mayor, I just have to say this because there's someone that'll give me a hard time tomorrow if I don't. Can we change the name of that?
Well, you know, we did for a while and when it was advertised, it was Director of Finance.
Okay.
However, the little sign hanging out the door
Yeah.
says Director of Operations and you know, I'm so cheap, I don't want to replace that little sign. And I feel that it's very rare that the person that's going to have PTSD over that word, operations, is rarely going to go upstairs and know that. That is bad.
I had to, I had to break it up.
Well, I changed it back because when I went upstairs to see how much of a mess it was in there, I saw on the door, that's what it says and um, I'm sure those little signs are fifty, sixty bucks at least, so, yeah.
Someone would probably replace this.
And it is more than finance, you know, because like Mike's saying, it's all, you know, we also have them doing HR and we also have them doing some other duties that really aren't just finance, so.
Okay.
Any other concerns?
I would, I would just say it was a really good interview. I think it's a, it was a good day for him because I think we're moving in a really good direction and it will not just be finances because he's very qualified and also accepts the responsibility of the whole gamut.
Yeah.
So.
He's willing to, you know, eat the whole pie, so to speak. All right, any other questions or concerns? All right, then, every, let's see. All in favor of approving hiring the new director of operations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is the accounts payable claims, so sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Joanne, in a second. All right, Clyde? All in favor of approving the accounts payable claims, so sixty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars and seventeen cents, say aye. Next, we move to the department head comments. And I guess we'll just start with you, Katie, do you have any comments? All right, thank you, how about you, Mary Jo?
Well, I don't have a lot. But um, I've worked with the city shock guys, we spent most of the day over there. And I gotta say, those two guys are very, very nice to work with, but they don't need to do.
But, you know, I.
Jump things down.
Yes, I've heard such good things about those guys. Uh, both of them are so helpful with the fire department and with all of our city vehicles, the police. We, they have saved us a lot of money.
So we're back.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Did you have anything, Mr. Rubus?
None.
Okay, all right. Then the next item is the personnel committee will meet on January twenty-seventh at four and the ordinance will meet on January twenty-seventh at four fifteen. And I have no mayor comments, so we can move for adjournment. All right, second, Doug? All right, all in favor, say aye. Thank you.